And then it sets forth that there's going to be two days of, uh, two days for parent teacher conferences, that the pre-K eight has got one in March and that everyone has got one in November, early in the day, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. How many late starts at the high school? Because I think like in June, they're coded 11, 12, and 13, but those are probably, I would suspect those are finals?
Yeah, there will be a total of 13. Six of them will be for professional development and seven will be for midterms and finals. I think it's three late start days for midterms and four late start days for finals. And six of them are for professional development.
Actually, this is a good time to ask. So the professional development at the high school, who's here? Who does that?
Actually, that was one of the pieces that Beth Pratt took on this year to oversee.
Okay. So one of the things that we all need to hear about is what did that position that we added this year bring to, what value did it bring based on what, you know, the reasons that we added it? So we need to have that probably sooner rather than later. And I don't think it's just the PD. I know it was looking at the curriculum. It was looking at technology integration and the curriculum. Educator evaluation was huge.
That's what I was trying to get to, yeah. And I would say that that has consumed an inordinate amount of her time.
So we need to get an update on that one before we finalize budget. So thank you for that. And then I'm really glad to see you're preserving Thanksgiving and the day before.
People love that.
Really, I know, but it's both sides because I got it both sides. But I would like to hear of the members of the community that were on the committee, what were some of the sensitivities that they had?
They were very much in favor of the Wednesday for Thanksgiving. Some of them traveled, some of them were prepping the bird, and some of them really just enjoyed the idea of having a day to just go before the madness, you know, of the holiday season descended upon them after that weekend. So they were very much in favor, in favor of that. We had had a conversation, do you mean generally there?
Yes.
We had had a conversation about maybe having the early release professional development days not on Friday, thinking that it might, for a lot of reasons, that it might, the parents were not in favor of that. Some of them, their thinking was that there are a lot of people who are able perhaps to work at home on Fridays, but not necessarily on Thursday, so it might be easier for them to take care of, you know, get childcare coverage on those days. And really, the deal was sealed on that one when we learned that the pre-K would be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so that the Friday, you know, they wouldn't want to lose a day, in other words.
Yeah.
They had it on that Thursday.
Well, that was.
So those were there. Yeah, and then of course, and then one of the, one of the members is very attuned to the Jewish High Holidays and make sure that we stay, stay aware of those, so we appreciate that input. Yeah, it's a good group. It's our second year with exactly the same group and it's really worked out.
Good, good. Okay, so if there are no other questions, I'm assuming you need a vote on this.
Yes, please.
Does anyone want to make a motion to adopt?
Are we adopting the calendar as is or are we adopting the calendar to the eighth day? Didn't you ask for an eight?
With the May 24th.
With the May 24th.
With the May 24th, early release professional development.
So as amended. Kathy, you want to?
Yeah, I move that we accept the 2018-19 school year calendar as amended.
And a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Elise. All those in favor? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you for your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you for preserving Thanksgiving. Okay, moving on. School safety plans. I think this is a hot topic and we're going to do a lot of listening.
That's great. I'm going to pull a lot of people to the table, too. Actually, I'm going to ask our chief Nelson to come forward. Joel Bates is going to represent our principals. Lisa Glubrki is here, of course, our nurse leader, and Rob Friesweg is our interim director of facilities. So they're all going to be here for questions. You may not have a lot of questions for Rob, but he's here anyway, and I think he can speak as well to some of the ongoing work that we've done in the last year or so. Joel actually pulled together a nice presentation. I think Elise is going to bring it up. I'm going to talk through it rather quickly and then we're going to kind of open up just for some free-flowing discussion between all of us. I mean, we had some good discussion today as well. And I think that that's also important for, for parents to know that we immediately reflect on whatever situation has come our way. When we talk about campus safety, and Paul DiDomenico may pop in as well, we look at it from, it's so much more than a lockdown, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. Why, when we look at safety, it's a broad issue across the entire district. It has a lot of stakeholders involved, and we're going to go through that as well. Who's involved? Who does what? So we'll take a quick look at that. One of the things I would want you to know is a traditional approach has been in place for years. Okay, so we had, like, somebody had sent me an email, have you changed anything since I've come here? The answer is no, I haven't changed any of the drills or anything like that. What we have done is we've, we've gone about looking at different practices. We've gone about fixing things that were broken, adding some different cameras, that kind of thing. But we're going to talk about that in some, to some extent here in a few minutes. So when we talk about our approach to safety, it's about how many doors could be opened at the high school at a moment. It's about social emotional learning for kids. It's about those kids who sees, or adults who see something and say something and that we are able to follow up on. It's all those kinds of things. So when we, when we look at the, if you can put the first slide up there, please, there we go. We believe the optimal campus physical safety is achieved through the attention to the three primary areas. That's the application of the tools and our resources, communication, obviously, training and thoughtful planning for the faculty and, and our students. We're, we're all going to have some discussion on that as we, we come back and circle back to that. Optimal emotional safety is achieved through consistent attention to individual student needs and concerns by creating cultures within our schools that stress attentive and available counseling services, committed focus on positive aspects of our school culture, and a shared community. And I know Chairman Moscow, you and I have talked about this, too. I mean, certainly the school district plays a large part in this, but we see this as a partnership between ourselves, our parents, our law enforcement, all of the key stakeholders who make up our, our family of schools. We have a couple of different support teams that are already in place and have been in place, and I want to talk about that just briefly. And I will go through all this quickly, then we can open our discussion. The NRSD Emergency Response Task Force was, of course, followed with Donna Lindstrom last year, and Lisa has taken over it this year. That is an ad hoc committee and probably will be disbanded once its work is complete. One of the, it was looking at a number of different components, and one of those was upgrading our current crisis manual. So there are crisis manuals in place in all of our buildings right now, but it needs to be updated. We are very close to going to publication this year, very, very close, and we pulled back and said, no, we've still got some more work to do on this. So that crisis, the new crisis manual upgraded is just about ready to go. The NRSD SHAC, the School Health Advisory Committee, is a standing committee that looks at addressing emotional health and wellness concerns. Joel can certainly speak a little bit more to that. Each school has a safety committee. So every one of our buildings has its own safety committee. Lisa has been sitting in on many of those meetings. We're going to talk to, as we, we talk through some of these things about some of the, I wouldn't say gaps, but consistency places that we would like to move to next because we see, we see some areas of challenge for us. Crisis teams. Now, crisis teams generally are groups of people, generally ad hoc, based on whatever situation it is that we are dealing with. If it's a death or it's a suicide, it's like one group of people. If it's something else, it's another group. But it's an ad hoc committee that's brought together to deal with whatever situation it is. So it's a case-by-case group. But it generally, to be honest with you, it's almost always the same people. It's your nurse leaders, your, or your nurse contingency, it's your administrators, it's your counselors and such. Going on to the next? Thank you. Here's what the safety committees look like right now here. This is the Emergency Response Task Force that we have district-wide. Here are the, and how often they meet. Now, the, the task force, of course, meets kind of irregularly as things are coming up. They're called in and they meet together. And this fairly large group, I think it was about 14 or 15 people. That group includes, as you can see, some of our law enforcement as well as some of these. I see that that's kind of missing there, but that's also a group of people that are involved in that. Is it there?
Police Department.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. I see, yeah. So that gives you an idea of the groups and how often they meet. The school crisis teams, as I say, come together on an as per needed basis depending on the crisis that we're addressing. The application of tools and resources. So this is, I'm going to go through a couple of these things kind of quickly right now. The security assessment is something that we actually planned for last year and last year's budget. And so we're just in the process of playing that out. Now, I really want to stress that the stuff that we're talking about here tonight, like, we're going to make some modifications, but most of this stuff has been ongoing. It didn't just start to happen because of an incident. We budgeted for this last school year and we're playing it out right now. And Rob is walking, I think Lisa, you are as well, through each building, and each building is looking at doing an overall assessment. Then they'll come back, we'll take a look and start to prioritize and make sure that some very specific things are addressed, although we are addressing other things right now as ongoing. We do have the sign-in procedures. One of the things that was suggested last year, you'll remember, too, was a Raptor system. We did some initial look at that and then kind of put it off on the burner because we weren't sure if that was really where we wanted to land for multiple reasons. The locked doors, one of the things that the, the task force had suggested and we have stressed is internal locked doors as well as external locked doors. We continue to, to work at some of those doors that have inappropriate locks. We've also done some rekeying throughout the district in the last 18 months in some of our buildings. So when we talked locked doors, we're talking about exterior perimeter as well as interior. Staff badges and just in general badges, one of the things that was interesting, I spoke earlier about some of our staff that had made the move into the Lancaster schools. One of the things that we found ourselves up against that we didn't expect is the children who said, where's your badge? Who are you? And I guess one little person, one little, I think it was a K or grade one stood at the table and said, I don't know you, I don't know you, I don't know you. You know? But it sends a message, right? And you say, okay, the work we're doing is, is working. It's, you know, becoming part of our culture. We've, we've numbered doors on our exterior buildings. Campus lighting, of course, you'll recall last year, we, we thought we were doing a really good thing with our campus lights outside. Clearly, that did not go over particularly well, but you'll notice that when you walk out here, it's all lit now, right? And before it wasn't. Before we would walk out here, it was pitch black, and now we've got all those lights. So the good news is, we took these lights that we had gotten the complaints on from the front and we redistributed them throughout the district so that they're used other places. For example, if you go back to the back of Florence Sawyer School right now, it looks like daylight back there because one of those lights has gone back there. So we didn't do away with those lights, we just moved them. There's the keying of the doors, cybersecurity tools. In my time, I can't, I can only speak for my time here, and I apologize for that because I really don't know what happened before, so I'm only speaking about my time here. We have put into place several, several security, cybersecurity tools. One we've just put into place in the last couple of months that has proven to be particularly effective, and it is a type of nanny or filter, if you will, that picks up on key terminology or key themes of our student work. And one of the ones, things I want to stress to everyone, just as we stress as school committee members, if you write something on here, you know it's open to the public. Don't put anything in your emails that you don't want to see in the Boston, front of the Boston Globe. Same thing for our students. When you're using our computers, know that we have access to that. Well, now, not only do we have that access to it, but if something goes on that we should be alerted to or your parents should be alerted to, we are taking that next step. Paul DiDomenico probably has taken the lion's share of those sheets. Basically, what happens is the director of technology will come down and say, I think you need to see this. And then I meet up with Principal DiDomenico and he goes back to deal with whatever that is. But sometimes it's profanity-lidden, written, you know, whatever assignment or what they propose as an assignment or what have you. But we have recently, for example, also dealt with self-harm. And it was all written down in an article that we got the flag. The flag came through on the weekend, actually. And the director of IT immediately connected with the school principal, I get two o'clock that afternoon, and that principal immediately connected with the parent right away and that child got help immediately. So I'm very pleased with the cybersecurity tools that we have put into place. It's, it's working for us. The medical emergency response plan, this is something that's relatively new that we're working on. The Crisis Go pilot is something we took a look at last year, and Florence Sawyer is going to look at it this year for the, the first time. Walkie-talkies, we, we've done a little bit of extra, taken some extra care with our walkie-talkies. And we thank our police because we've now got all, in all of our buildings, direct lines to our police force on one channel in every one of our buildings across the school district.
You didn't have that before?
No, we did not, actually. You, you brought the, about three of them in last year, I think?
Yes, for the Bolton.
Yeah, for Bolton. But we, we have them also in Lancaster and in Stowe, so I would want you to know that we have all of those. And actually, the chief came in last year when he gave them to us to talk to us about them, so.
When the SRO started to become big at the schools.
Good.
Cameras, I did not realize that we had some, a number of cameras that were not working, but we know that now and we've been taking remedies to fix those. But I would also want you to know that we have also, in my time, added cameras across the district. So it's not just simply a case of, I think some students might think, oh gee, that's broken. Well, guess what? It's not broken anymore. And actually, last year, you know, we were talking this morning about an incident that we had totally, completely on tape, we were able to take that snapshot and say, and when somebody said, no, that didn't happen, we said, actually, yeah, there it is. It did happen. And I think that that little pumpkin thought that maybe that camera was broken, and it was not. So we've done that. We've also, in this new contract with the buses, we have cameras on all of our buses. And I can't tell you the number of times that our Michelle Cody has gone off to pick up the videos, and we've taken care of a lot of bus issues this year as a result of the cameras on the buses. So that's been very good. Of course, our school resource officer, we absolutely adore her, and I know that she works so closely with you and is working this week even though our students are off. We're still dealing with some things this week. So she tends to work for us even whether we're in school or not, so hats off. So that kind of, that's kind of a poke for you, some general, general things. Communication, I just want to talk about the partnership with the local law enforcement. You know, Chief, I was in a session on Friday afternoon with superintendents from around Massachusetts and around the country, and it was run by Chicago police, policeman who specializes in school safety. And he asked the room, how many of you in here have really strong relationships with your police force? And it was maybe a third of the room or a little bit less. And, you know, I was saying to our team this morning, how fortunate we are because I feel we have stellar relationships with all three of our police departments. So, and I think that that really serves well to protect all of us, and so we're, we're very, very grateful for that. Our safety committee meetings are ongoing. We continue to reinforce and refine our, our culture. Transition meetings from the elementary to middle school, which we were talking about earlier, we, we believe will play a bigger part in this. And again, that's something we've been working on. It's not just now that Amory is bringing this up. We've had these ongoing discussions. And then incident review, and you know, I give you an example of an incident review. We were talking about it today and Sean Rocha said, you know, at the end of all, all of our principals' meetings, we always do what I call lessons learned section, where we go around the table and everybody presents a lesson that they've learned that we all can learn from. And we were saying how important I think that is, and Joel will certainly feel free to pipe in on that, but I think that that's a key component for us.
There's always an opportunity for growth. You know, I think we do things very well, and I think that, you know, part of that is being open to the idea that there are always things that we could have done differently and where we can be better. And so, you know, for example, if there's a medical emergency on campus, the, the first thing we do after that's taken care of and the police and EMTs have, have done what they need to do is to, you know, capture that time where we can bring everyone together around the table and say, you know, what worked well, where do we need to do better, what do we need to do to get there? And that's, that's been a pretty valuable process for, I would say, for all of my colleagues in, in helping us continue to grow and respond to the issues that we have to deal with.
So I think, is that the last page? I think it's the last page. Oh, sorry, thank you. Training and thoughtful planning. I think that as we look, I'm going to say backwards to what we feel has been a more traditional approach, I think certainly, you know, sitting in that session on a Friday afternoon, there were a number of things that came forward. Now, I also want to be cautious as I say this, but the truth is, we were told time and again, make sure that you do not overshare what you're doing. And so please don't think this is being evasive at all. Paul, hi, come on in, feel free to join us. We started early today, my apologies. So we won't be oversharing information this evening, and if you think you've got a question but you know what might, for school committee, you know it might be a question, maybe you should maybe ask me on the side rather than here, please feel free to ask me after. But for general public information, we really have to be careful about what is specifically shared out there. Fire drills and evacuation drills, these are areas that Lisa and I and the chief have all spoken about that we really, these, well, actually, all of them are all areas that we really need to have a fresh look at. The fire drills, I think, run pretty smoothly. I think they're pretty standard, you know, so I don't think that we're worried about fire drills. One of the suggestions that was made, and I've put this to, to our principals earlier today, one of the sessions that they talked about Friday afternoon was the notion of front-loading all of your drills, and that's the approach that I would prefer to take next year, and you just front-load them all, like, let's say your first, second week. Now, of course, when we have our drills, everybody's there, so we have to work this through with our police and fire departments and such because we're all there, ambulance, everybody. But I do think that through the month of September, we should, rather than doing the traditional take of fire drills in the warmer months, lockdown in the winter months, I think we're kind of past that right now. And I think we need to respond to the fact that we have had a number of shootings since Christmas. I don't want to overreact or do, have a knee-jerk reaction, but it does send a message. And so I think that we really need to rethink doing those drills and when we do them. We've also talked, for example, about our mentorship program and said for all new teachers, this needs to be addressed in August with the new people coming in. We've talked about our cafeteria staff and our custodial staff, how do we reach out to them? We are going to be bringing in all of our safety committees. If we can get them all in here next week, that's our plan right now, to bring all school committees in from the entire district into one room and kind of go through some things. I think we need to have a clear articulation of expectations of the mission and what the group needs to, to do. And then I think that will spill over. So I think right now it's kind of been left to, well, this is just what we always do, and I think we need to rethink that. So I'm going to open it up to, to everybody and then we'll take some questions. So maybe if we can, if you can each make a couple of quick comments. We'll bring up Alice just super briefly to say that, I said to this group once before that we don't follow Alice with fidelity. So I'm going to continue to say that, you know, we, we do a hybrid of what works in Nishoba, not Alice with fidelity. Alice is an acronym. It's not something that a student would say, oh, we do Alice. It doesn't work like that. It's an acronym with very specific options that are attached to it. So Chief, let's have a couple of comments from you and some thoughts from you.
Sure. Well, over the past few years, if not five, 10 years, I can tell you, you have a very dedicated and compassionate employees, staff, administration that really take a forefront for getting these policies done and interacting with, with everybody, with the law enforcement, police and fire, all that is done. I wish you started with this first slide because I think the drills are going to flush out 99% of your problems. When we do an evacuation drill, when we do a fire drill, we find what's wrong, you know, this door lock doesn't work. How can we improve it? Then we get Rob over and he starts fixing the doors and we find out some teachers don't have keys. So we find the problems and we fix it and we improve and move on. I think what we're finding now is our plan is, is good. It can always be better, and that's where we need to look at it and be proactive and move that into a, a higher level and give them a toolbox. So if something does ever happen, they can go back to their toolbox and say, I can do this, this and that, so that I don't have to just stay in the classroom and, and have to deal with an active shooter or something bad that's going on. So there are improvements that we all can do, and I think because each scenario is so fluid, you, you just can't train for one specific incident every time. It's just, there's too many things that can happen and you've only got certain ways to get the kids and get them out of the school and keep them safe. And there's another issue that we, we do have to look at, and I know we've talked about this many times, and I talked to Paul about this, is where do we send 1,000 kids if they evacuate the building? Nishoba's tough and, you know, obviously Sawyer and Nemison, a little bit different. So we have to do a lot of strategy thinking and planning on how to do that. So that's, that's something on the table that we're going to look at. And I think the security up there is exceptional. The doors are locked during the day, nobody gets in unless they're buzzed in and watched through security. So parents should be, feel comfortable that everybody here, including these fine people, are doing a great job getting that done. And thank God there hasn't been an incident, and I think if, God forbid, if it does, we're, we're ready. You know, we, we may not have the manpower, but you know, with Casey up there, there's your first line of defense. She's going to be kicking down doors and going, finding the bad guy.
I, I'm, no, I have several questions, which I'll hold, but one specifically since you're up at the, up at bat here. There's been a lot in the, I know what Alice stands for, but there's been a lot about Alice in, in the news, and I think it would be helpful for people to understand, what is Alice? What's it stand for?
That's really a good, that's a great.
Lisa is, I think Lisa's trained in it. I'm not trained in it.
Yeah, Lisa, she's really our expert.
It's alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. So they, they have plans at every phase. And it, it's a good setup, but sometimes what's good for one school is not good for another school. So that's what we have to look at. And what Lisa comes from, a school system that had that, and we're going to try to involve that. And that's your, that's your toolkit. That's, there's more there that we can start using.
So I want to be really clear here. It's not that we don't have something, it's that we, some components of that process don't work for our school system. Is that?
We're still evaluating to see as a general for the whole district of what it's going to look like. And I have to agree with Brooke that saying the word Alice just doesn't mean much to us. It's more of the options that we have within those components, it's just the acronym.
It's just an acronym.
It's just an acronym. So we want to look at, as a, as a whole district and do a needs assessment of where we are. Some schools were doing things a little bit more proactive than others as far as lockdowns and shelters in place. They're all doing a great job, but we feel that there were some inconsistencies amongst the towns, which, that's the whole district umbrella that we're looking at as far as the Emergency Response Task Force and seeing how we can fill those holes in a little bit. So we're all learning the same type of methods. It's got to look different. What we're talking about, it'll look different at the elementary level than it will at the middle school, than it will at the high school, but the concept is still the same. It's just the method of, of executing is different.
I think too, and as the chief and I were talking the other day, too, you know, the notion is that like 80% of what we do should be consistent across the board. It's that 20% that would be school-specific. But, you know, to the chief's point, my point the other day, if they come, like he said, if something happens at that high school, he said, you know, all of your police forces are coming in here right away. It's not just going to be Bolton. We want our Stowe and Lancaster police to know exactly what, so that everybody's on that same page, and that's what we're aiming for, that level of consistency.
Okay. I'll hold my other comments and questions.
I will add one thing. I will agree that if, if parents see something or kids see something, they have to say something. I, I always get the general statement, this is going on at the high school, but nobody wants to come forward with any information. We don't have credible information or something to come in to investigate. Rumors are rumors. You really got to give us something specific. So I can't go interview 1,000 kids and say, did this happen today? So, I can't go interview 1,000 kids and say, did this happen today? It's not going to work.
So, to that, I'm sorry, I have to do another one because it's timely. To that, one of the things that I noticed with the committees is that there aren't any kids and there's no students serving on those committees.
At the task force for the ERTF, there is a student?
That's the task force.
That's the first one, the task force one.
The district-wide.
The district-wide.
Yeah.
So, would it, you know, I'm not dictating this because I'm not a safety expert, but if the kids know what's going on generally and there's a reluctance on the, for whatever reasons, we all understand it, we've all been kids, perhaps it's something where, you know, we think about pulling together some, you know, committees, groups of kids in the schools to ask them, what do you think we could be doing better? But that also empowers them, gives them a voice, gives them a level of, you know, responsibility and leadership in the school. And maybe there's something that's happening in another district across the country where they've done something like that and those kids, now they have someone who's a peer who could be the conduit to the administration for the kids that aren't comfortable speaking. But I would love to see more involvement with kids because I think, you know, you just mentioned a first or second grader or kindergarten and said, I don't know you, who are you, right? Why not, I mean, they're the ones that know what's going on. So, I would love to see us do something to include children somehow.
Can we continue then? Joel?
Well, so I guess just to, you know, I'd like to obviously thank the chief for the, and I do think it's a close and positive working relationship, partnership. You know, he's always there anytime we need to consult on, you know, we're thinking, our safety committee's thinking about this and he'll come over and we'll talk about it. We've made a lot of changes and continue to look at, you know, where we're doing things well and where we need to be better. And, you know, and I'm grateful for all of our first responders partnership and that. I think the challenge for me always as a pre-K through eight principal is, you know, finding where that balance is between optimal physical safety and optimal emotional safety. And, you know, you can have an optimally physically safe environment and then the challenge for me is at what cost in terms of the, you know, the fear factor that, you know, something more overt may instill in kids. And at the same time, you know, you want that authentic feeling of this is a safe place to learn. I don't have to worry about anything, you know, outside of here. Not only in terms of the physical safety and people coming on campus, but that it's a positive place, that your input is valued, that you are listened to, that you are a contributing, you know, member of the student body. And so, I think, you know, I would say for all of our colleagues that that's, you know, that's the challenge, to continue to work through what we see outside of our walls and how we apply lessons learned outside to where, to where we are and what we have to do for the day.
Great. Thank you. Paul?
Thanks. Thanks for having us here tonight to speak on this. And I'm so grateful also to the chief. We feel so fortunate to have Casey in the building. And I think one of the things she really does is embody the kind of culture that we want throughout our school. She's talking to the kids, whether it's at lunch or in the office, making connections with the kids. They feel very comfortable in speaking to her as well as to other folks in the building. I can think of two instances in the past week where information that students brought forward was instrumental in allowing us to help the students who needed it. I think at any, any large high school, you know, 1,000 kids or so, there are a variety of kind of risks that are occurring throughout a day, safety issues. Some are, of course, you know, more, a higher profile risk than others. But I think we try to approach all of those different scenarios with the same mindset of trying to help the kids in that particular instance, making sure that we communicate with families. I think it's always a balance, you know, speaking of the balance, as you just mentioned, Jill, we want to inform responsibly, we want to protect privacy, and we don't want to foment anxiety because that's not going to be beneficial to the school culture as a whole.
Great. Thanks. Lisa?
So, just turn on the court tales there. When you look at first responders, a lot of things what we look at is prevention, preparing, and then what's happening at the time and then recovery. And that's what we do. And a lot of the things that Brooke talked about was, what are we doing to prevent? With security cameras, et cetera. But some of the things that we look at for prevention too within our students is some of the life skills train that we do with social, emotional. But also, the most recent one that's going to be, the high school staff is going to be trained on administrators first as youth mental health first aid, which is coming forward. And that's a huge undertaking of the district, which I think is amazing and outstanding in itself. That we're looking at staff to be trained in this to identify key areas that are happening or our students that are struggling and an earlier intervention in what possibly we are right now. I think this district does a great job with that from what I've seen when I'm in the schools. But I think it's something that's going to benefit the school district.
Lisa, can I just jump in on that just quickly, so to give the school committee a bit of a broader context too? This was something that Jody Speck had brought forward to us last year. And we agreed to send off people who could become trainers to Syracuse this summer to get appropriately trained. And now, they're coming back and we're doing the train-the-trainer model. And so, just to put it in context, and we said, we'll try this at the high school with the notion of trying to extend it, spider it out after if we feel it's being successful. But it is a first step and it's very exciting, very, very exciting.
So, prevention, then you look at what we prepare. And that's what a lot of the emergency response task force is looking at now. How do we prepare better? Or what do we do really well right now in our preparation for any type of emergency event? Does not have to be a violent intruder, can be that medical emergency, any type of evacuation that needs to happen, the fire drills and/or some type of facilities that we have to evacuate for whatever reason. So, looking at that as a full plank, preparation is something that we're looking at. Also, prior to that preparation is, I did meet with also Lancaster Chief of Police, and he was on board with some other options based on some of the drills that we're doing. I met with Bolton and agreed that we need to add some of those options. And my next steps is to then continue on with Stow and work my way uphill, I guess. And then also, we did some training with principals and assistant principals on what some of those other options will look like, to see how it will look like in this district. And that's something that needs to, the continuation of that communication with our administration has to continue to see how each school district is going to look like or each town looks like that. And we'll continue that process. Responding is, we have our EMS, fire and police that know the school buildings for their responses. They're part of some of our drills when they can be. And that's important, that we learn from those drills. And then, the recovery phase is something that we need to really look at as a district. And we have that in place with our crisis response teams, that when something does happen, we need to respond in the appropriate manner and do we have the resources for that? So, that's a lot of what we're looking at with the emergency response task force and as a district.
Rob, anything that you'd like to add in terms of facilities right now?
Just to kind of follow up with what Lisa was saying, you know, coming aboard in November and joining the emergency response task force, one of my tasks is actually reaching out to security consultant firms that specialize in school securities to come in and, you know, see where our strengths, see where our weaknesses are. And also, working with all the, you know, the first responders, police departments, EMS, you know, fire departments and coming up with a game plan.
Have you engaged someone or are you looking for someone?
No, I, we, two consultants, one I've, we just over the phone and the internet. And then, today, we actually had a company come in, Lisa was with us, with a three-person panel.
So, are they doing a security audit?
They will be, once we narrow everything down.
Oh, that's great.
You know, hopefully, in the next couple of months.
This is what I was saying about earlier. We budgeted for this last year and last year's budget. And we're spending that money now.
Yeah. The meeting today, I thought, went really well.
That's great.
You know, and they want to come back. One of the individuals was a Connecticut state trooper that he works with this company. And he wants to pick a site, which, you know, we'll do and we'll bring in the police and EMS and fire departments so everybody can be on the same page and, you know, we can all work together and see where our strength and weaknesses are.
That's great.
And then, obviously, the physical building itself, you know, if cameras go down or doors, you know, we're having issues with doors, you know, as soon as we find out, we get right on it and try to.
So, I'd assume that they're also going to be making recommendations on where we need to put additional cameras.
Yeah, all that will be in.
Thank God. We've been waiting for that. Okay, good. So, I think that kind of wraps it up, but we'll turn it over now to our school committee members in case we've missed some things that you'd like to ask questions on.
I have several, so, and usually, I wait till the end, but I can't because this is one of my favorite topics. So, the Raptor system, okay. And I know Joel and Superintendent Clancy and I exchanged an email on this. Right now, when someone comes to one of the buildings, they buzz, we see who it is, we let them in, they sign their name. And what?
I'm sorry. They also get a visitor lanyard. They're the same throughout the district.
They get a visitor lanyard. Okay. And for the most part, we know who's coming in the building because they're parents, right? But what if someone comes in the building and just happens to give you a name or bypasses? Is there a way, and we talked about this in the email, to, because I had heard about it through some other districts who don't have the Raptor system, but they take a photocopy of the person's driver's license, so that you have a record of exactly who that is and you can track who that is. And you, I probably should be in your field because I like that idea because then we know who it is and I don't think it's an invasion of privacy because you're coming to one of our schools and we want to know who you are. So, the question is, if we don't have a Raptor system in place right now, can we do something like that? I don't care if it means buying desktop printers for everybody in the school so they don't have to get up and walk around. What do you think about that?
So, I think that we've, Joel and I have had this discussion because we actually had talked about it last year and said, do we feel that we're ready to go there? And we weren't sure if we quite were. Joe, would that be fair to say?
Yeah, well, I, you know, so I think the challenge is, you know, you have an event at school and you have multiple people coming in all at the same time. So, it, you know, I wouldn't say necessarily take a copy of the license as just take the license itself and we'll hold on to it while you're here and then you, but, you know, there are challenges in that as well. And it's something that we have considered. I think if, you know, if the, you know, if the feeling among the community and stakeholders is that, you know, yeah, we absolutely have to do it, then, you know, we could certainly put it in place and, you know, and look at it as a pilot system at our school and see how that goes.
Which Joel offered last year as well.
But I think on, you know, a visitor on off-hours, it's not a problem. When there are multiple visitors for an event, for a concert, for, you know, a first grade play, it could be more of a challenge.
Other questions?
I have one, I have one more, sorry. I have two more. One is, it feels like we focus a lot of our, I mean, certainly, there's a band around each of the schools. There's a lot of focus because they're young adults, actually almost adults at the high school, but it feels like the middle school is where sometimes we need to maybe focus a little bit more attention based on the ages of those individuals and they're almost at the high school. So, I don't know if there's something more, what you guys have thought about. Do we want to look at something broader at the middle school, similar to what we do at the high school? I don't know.
Well, I think, again, I know, Joel, you represent both the elementary and middle school, but we had, like, again, we had some good discussion, I think some rich discussion around the table today. I'm not disagreeing with you, but quite frankly, and to be honest with you, the last year and a half since I've been here, we've seen a fair number of things at that middle school level that have other types of things that you're talking about with kids at different levels of distress. I don't know. I think that we've put a lot of good tools in place. I don't know if we need to put more in place or not. Right now, I feel that what we've got in place is working relatively well. We respond very, very quickly, like we did this weekend, like within hours, you know, probably even less than hours. Bet you that was just minutes on what I'm sitting here thinking about. So, I think as soon as we see something, we say something as well to the right. The difference is, we've got the right pool of people to go off to right away. So, I don't know. I mean, I think that our middle school principals would have said something differently, I mean, today when we're talking about it.
Yeah, I think, you know, certainly, all of our schools are looking at social, emotional goals as well in the district as well. And so, I think, you know, that, you know, two-tiered approach to, you know, looking at individual student need and continuing to promote a culture that supports, you know, the positive aspects of school and valuing the individual and I think, you know, will continue to serve us well. But, yeah, there is more work that we can continue to do.
I think we always look to improve, so.
I'm not saying that we're not doing something. I'm just wondering, is it that age group, there's, you know, something new? I don't know. So, thank you for that. And then, the other thing I wanted to mention, and I'm going to let you, Don Lowe here, the town administrator in bold, and I'm putting you on the spot, so I apologize.
Thank you.
Safety is, there's so many aspects of safety. I mean, look at all you folks here, right? I mean, Rob, I love what you're doing, like, Lisa, thank you for being in this district. But safety at the high school has been on your mind and some of the things that you're, and I wonder if you're free to share any of what you're working on. If you're not and I put you on the spot, we'll wait.
Okay, well, sure, I'll be happy. See, first of all, and I'd like to, I can't stress enough, this conversation between the chief and I took place prior to the tragedy in Florida. But we were talking about, you know, what more can we do really for the overall safe environment, you know, outside the school? And, you know, we've got the safety zone lights down there and we're trying to slow traffic down and so forth. But the ultimate goal is to lower the speed limit there. And there are different steps that we need to go through. So, I spoke with the chief about, you know, what can we do about an increased presence down there so that people who might be inclined to speed or might be inclined to ignore certain signs can expect us to be there off and on, but not in a predictable way? So, the chief very quickly came up with a scheme, a plan. I shouldn't say a scheme, a plan.
A scheme.
A plan for that. And it's going into effect very soon where there will be an increased visible police presence in the neighborhood of the school. So, I think that serves a couple of purposes. One, obviously, what we were initially talking about, which is trying to slow people down going through there. But also, people knowing that at any time, there could be a police cruiser right there by the school. So, I think that's a really important thing and I really commend the chief. He acted, same day we had the conversation, he had a plan.
Great. Thank you.
Beyond that, a very good friend of mine pointed out to me that maybe we have a, perhaps have a lighting issue in the area of the high school on the, near the street when it's dark and there are activities going on in the school and kids are drawn to the pizza and they want to bolt across the street. Is it bright enough down there? And the feeling was, well, probably not. So, I looked at a couple of things. One is, what about the installation of another pole with another light? And I reached out to my contact at National Grid today and had several email exchanges. So, National Grid was very responsive, gave me pricing on what it would take to do that. And quite honestly, I don't know what my expectations were, but it was cheaper than what I thought it would be. So, I was really pleased by that. It would probably take a while to get it done because, you know, there's a whole work order process to go through and all that. But we had a very good conversation. I understand how much it would cost and it doesn't bother me. In fact, I was very, very pleased. And the other aspect was, and again, I spoke to the chief and, you know, feeling a little foolish after he gave me his idea, which was, well, rather than put up another pole, what about brighter bulbs? Should have been obvious, I just didn't think of it. So, I don't know what our brighter bulb options are, but another thing to look at. Almost certainly could get that done more quickly. Don't want to get into light pollution down there. I don't want to butter. I don't want a butters complaining that it's too light down there. Personally, I'd rather have it too light in that area than not light enough. But, again, another thing that I'm evaluating, I'll be coming back with a recommendation on it. So, improve lighting down there, you know, one way or another. I think we need to improve the lighting down there some. And also, a commitment to an increased police presence. I'm not going to talk about the frequency or anything like that, but I can promise people that they will be seeing the police in that area. So, that's pretty much where we are.
And if I can just bring from, one of the things too, again, I can only speak to what's happened in the last, you know, since I've come on stream, but, Rob, and I think Joel too, our buildings, we also had a number of broken lights when I came in, and bulbs that needed to be replaced, and all of that has been corrected as well.
The cameras aren't just new, they're, all the ones that we've had have been upgraded as well, so.
Yeah. So, we, yeah, thank you.
All right, I'm done, I'm taking control, and there you go, Pat.
Just related to people who have access to the building, people who work in the district, whether they're teachers, or members of the custodial staff, or whoever, have a lanyard with an ID. When an outside contractor vendor comes into the building, they don't always come in through the front door, sometimes they come in through the custodians, and, you know, the loading dock, whatever. Are they required to wear the same kind of lanyard that any visitor to the building is? And do you, does, is there a place where they sign in and we keep track of that?
I would say yes, Kathy, that would be my expectation, I'm sure it's our shared expectation. Can I also say, there have been times when I've come upon a contractor, as you said, and they haven't had a lanyard? Yes, and that's when you stop, hey, you know what, can you, can you run by the office and just grab one? So, I mean, you have to be, you have to follow up to make sure that's happened.
Sure, no, it's just, I, not, not, it's not meant to be critical, I've just noticed that tools where, they're so consistent with folks who work in the district wearing them, and then you see contractors, vendors come in, and they, they can have the run of the building depending on, so it's just, might be something to look into, think about. Thanks.
All contractors do go through Rob's office as well, to, if there's, if they're going to be in the building at all, they go through the Chlorey process, through his office before.
That's good to know, too, right.
That's a good example, like, for the boiler replacement project, part of the prep for that, our contractor knew that all the, all the workers that were going to be in the building had to go through a Chlorey check, and this paperwork had to be submitted.
Thank you, Lysia, a question?
Yeah, I'm part of a lot of different educator groups, and somebody that I know was subbing the day after the shooting in Florida, and was very upset that she could not find a safety plan. And it had never been occurred to me, you know, she was sort of asking the other teachers around her, what should I do if something happens, you know, I'm a sub? Do we, and I don't need to know what the plan is, obviously, but is there a plan in place so that when people are coming into the building as a sub, they know how to evacuate the classroom? You know, she was concerned that it was so hard for her to find this information as a substitute.
I think Anne Marie's going to speak, speak to that, but I, I'm going to, first of all, say, that's an area I still think that we need to do work on, but Anne Marie, do you want to speak?
Mr. Grant does cover that during the substitute orientation at the start of the year, with the substitute come on, and then, we do that in September.
But that's, yeah, but that's one day, and then you forget about it, and then it's February, and you come in and you-
And you're in a class, and you've got the sub plan, you know, even just to know how to, if there's a fire, you know, where she should take the kids.
But where, is there not a crisis manual in every classroom?
There's a sub folder in every classroom.
No, a crisis manual, the, the actual manual. It's all, I mean, that's the one that we're updating right now, but there should be one of those in all of the classrooms. So, that'll be something that we'll have to go back and take a quick look at.
Steve, do you have a question?
Okay, I, I agree with Superintendent that the drills and everything should be forward loaded, should be front loaded.
Front loaded.
Front end loaded, because you can teach them how to do a fire drill, but the next week, there's an intruder, and, oh, well, we don't train for that for another two or three months. That's number one. Number two, having a little experience in disaster planning. It's wonderful to have a manual, but you just don't have time to pull it down off the shelf when something happens. And it has to be in this, perhaps, part of this two-day preschool professional development. There has to be something in there, a piece of the program that deals with this. Not necessarily where to go, but maybe what you could do is create a laminated sheet for each room, so that a, a substitute, right here in the center drawer, I pull it out, I know where my kids have to go.
Put it on the back of the door or something.
Well, the back of the door becomes very, very, very public, to a certain extent.
Yeah, and I'm not disagreeing with you, and I think the other thing too, that, that comes with that is a level of confidence. And I, my concern right now is that level of confidence isn't permeating throughout our district right now. That's an area we need to work on, so that people, when you ask someone, they could say, yep, this is exactly, and that's missing. That's why we need to go back and do some rethinking of the traditional approach, which is exactly what you're saying, Steve.
Anything else? Good. Thank you all for coming in tonight. I know this was a last-minute ad, and thank you for getting the call on Thursday morning. Appreciate you all coming, thanks so much.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, the next, we're now into our old business, and we're going to be a little late tonight, but settle in, a budget update, so.
Yeah, I'm going to get started, I'm going to bring Pat up, and you're right, settle in for a little, little while here, because we've got a couple of things that we want to kind of go through. You should have access, or Alita's going to put it up there. We're going to go through the new executive summary that we, we just did when Chairman Remosco asked us to look at things a little bit differently, rather than the change log that we've been working on. I want to go through a couple of things that are kind of going to, I guess, do it before we go into this, so that you know what my thinking is around some of these things. When I think about priorities for us and for our district, I listed my priorities, and then I sent them around to, to the principals, and said, these are the priorities that I see when we're talking about budget. What do you see are the priorities? And they all came back and chimed in on a piece of it, or, you know, I think that maybe we could look at this a little bit, in a little bit more detail and whatnot. So, I'm going to talk about this first, before we go in, and you can see maybe why. Joel, I'm sorry, did you want?
I just, do you need me to stay for this?
I think I might be okay, but you're welcome to stay. Thanks. Actually, yeah, you know that?
Yes.
Now that I, you're saying that, thank you. The safety and the ongoing work in this area, you, you heard me talk about the fact that we don't wait till an incident happens, but we've been planning, and we did that last year. We put money aside in the budget last year to do some things. We're doing the same thing this year. So, ongoing safety is work for us district-wide. The early literacy initiative, like, when we go through this and explain some of this thing, you'll see that that's still all in there, because that's what I feel, and the principals feel, is a priority. We're in year three of year five, it makes no sense to pull away from that now. And we're, we're seeing a lot of success with it. Our teachers are doing tremendous work in it, and so, it would just, I, I just can't imagine stopping that train right now. The science standards and, and ongoing work, I actually do want to bring up the priority sheet. I think that you've got it in there somewhere before we-
Yeah, we don't have any copies, or it's not in the package anymore, so.
Do I have the, oh, I'm sorry, my apologies, I might have it here. Actually, I don't. I do not have it here. Like the priorities, just, I just have a single sheet, Alita. Sorry. She'll bring it up. There it is, thank you. The science standards is the ongoing work that we've started with the new curriculum refinements, and so, that work is work that we want to have as ongoing in the district, and, let's see if she can get, I'm sorry. Go down a couple. There we have, right there, thanks. That's work that we're going to continue ongoing with, and again, there's professional development money that's in here that we haven't touched, in part because we want to continue the, the ongoing work for professional development for our staff with the science standards. The same thing is true for our math, and the ongoing textbook and coursework implementation, and the unit building that's happening in there, that our teaching and learning group is continuing to do. Next year, the social studies review will be complete. We want to start a little bit of that work this year, but the bulk of the social studies work will happen in 2019 and '20. We feel strongly, and, you know, I, Joel, I may bring you up when we talk about this for a minute, about the continued focus on the academic support district-wide, and why we're thinking the way that we are about the teaching and learning, and who should be looking after some of that work. The next one, of course, is the SOI, if there's follow-up. We're hoping that there's follow-up with the high school on that, so, of course, that's going to be taking a lot of our efforts as well. The last one here is the facilities and the ongoing efforts. I think we got a lot of, we've gotten a lot of really good work done the last 18 months. We want to keep that going. So, that, that's the continuing priorities. Looking at some new priorities, I think the first thing is the, the review and the reconfiguration of the teaching and learning unit, which I mentioned on the 20th, when we talked in January about that. We've got a number of different ideas that are, we're considering. Again, I'm having that discussion with the teaching and learning unit and our principals, so that this all ties in together. Also, we want to take a look at reviewing and reconfiguration of support for digital learning. I'm going to speak to that a little bit, in a little bit more detail, in another section of the meeting, but know that that's also at the forefront of our thinking right now. And the last one, of course, is, and this is going to take a fair amount of our time in the next little bit, is a review and reconfiguration of the district-wide safety committee's admissions. Now that you've heard all of that, you can see where we're headed with that. So, those really are our, our top priorities as a school district going into next school year. So, now, can we bring back that executive summary, please, Alita? Sorry, I'm going, I'm going back and forth. So, rather than a, just a change log, which is what we had been working on, Chairman Remosco asked us to go back and have a look at a format that you could easily, and so, we're hoping that, that's what this will be, easily see where we've made some adjustments since last time. And, Pat, I think between the two of us, we can talk a little bit, just talk through this. If you can start one or two, I'll do one or two, and we'll kind of go through the list. So, I just want to, again, look, here's your FY '18 voted. This is what was requested, this is on your January 20th meeting. This is what we're bringing forward tonight, which represents a 5.22% increase. Remember, I said to you earlier, if I didn't have to worry about our communities, I'd feel really good that we, we hit a nice spot here with the 5.22, but that's, that's not where we are. What we're showing you tonight is the changes that we've made to some of these lines that we're going to go through. And if you can imagine, it's really this binder, in essence, the same binder, but just truncated. This is just a truncated version. So, I'm going to have, we're going to go through this, and then I'm also going to go through a couple of other different profiles that we created for, just for discussion purposes tonight, I think. Of course, we're not looking for decisions at all tonight. So, Pat, why don't you start with these first two, they're pretty easy?
The first two are health insurance for active employees and retirees. The first line actually represents some insurance and some changes in the district in staffing. We decided to put it into that line right now, until we've gone through our whole process and been able to put it where it belongs.
So, that 225 was what was added to, for the contract?
No, this, these are the cuts or efficiencies that we are showing here to get to this 5.22. This is just, these are, these are the, like, if you take a look, that's the difference between the January 20th number and tonight's number.
No, I understand that. So, my, my question is, is the additional that was put into the insurance part of the 6.263?
No, that was last year that we did that, when we were in negotiations for-
So, that's been removed, or it's still in there?
Oh, yeah, that's last, that's the part that we're in right now.
All right.
So, this year does not complain, does not contain that. Right now, what we're saying is that that's a placeholder now for some staffing changes. We, there's a reduction in there, that we're already anticipating, but we won't go into detail tonight.
Okay, so, that's fine. And then, the only other question is, Level sent me, I heard 599, now I'm seeing 522.
Yeah, because we actually put it to 522, we managed to go to 522 rather than the 599 the other night, when, you know, I talked, so it's down a little bit more than you thought. Good catch on that, you're absolutely right.
All right.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, you're up.
I'll take the, I'll take the next one here. So, this is, and I'm going to have some further discussion around the table, and I don't know whether this is a topic you want to talk about tonight or not, but, so, in two places tonight, and when I go through, I'm going to, I'm going to review the staffing requests as well tonight with you. We've got a different sheet that we're going to show you tonight. Remember the yellow sheets that you had, I think, I want to say it was maybe section three in your binder? We're going to give you a, yes, thank you, we're going to give you a different sheet tonight with a little more fine-tuned, and not, not that 400,000 mark. We, I think we've been incredibly creative here. Now, what this is, this shows the salaries for the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. What I would like to point out, though, is that we also had somebody from teaching and learning retire this year. And so, what we've done is, we took part of that salary, and in essence, to cover the cost of an assistant superintendent, rather than hiring another teaching and learning-
I'm sorry, Brooke, I, I'm trying to get oriented to, and all I have is that and this. I'm trying to look at the difference, it's really difficult to see.
Tab three.
No, no, I have, so, we're in tab three now.
No, I don't know, that-
At the very end, there's an executive summary.
No, I have the executive summary, so at the very end, the last page of tab one, is that what we're looking at? If I'm trying to look at the, I'm trying to make a connection between what we got originally and what we're looking at now.
Okay, do we, is this posted for that?
So, I'm looking at tab one, right off the budget.
Okay, why don't you run some quick copies of this, of course?
So, we're looking at that, but I don't see-
We're going to make some quick copies for you, so that it's closer for you to look at, yeah. Oh, Alita's going to-
So, I'm looking at the, the corresponding, so we've got the old one and the new one. If I put them side by side, this is what's confusing. So, I, I don't see what you're talking about when you talk about assistant superintendent's salary or any of that stuff here.
This is, this is a, like, a truncated version of it, so.
So, it's different than first page of tab one?
Correct.
So, I shouldn't be looking at this at all?
Not right now, you don't have to. After, what you could do is, take a look at the truncated version, and compare it to the version that you've got. When I'd asked you about the, the, the other section, that was the yellow pages, that's what I was bringing forward.
Section three.
Right, exactly, and I'm going to give you a new section three in a minute, that has-
So, are we going to get copies of this now?
Yeah, sure, just running it right now. So, let me, let me just go on, and then we can backtrack, if you'd like to backtrack. So, the, the, this here was the number that you got in, in, with regards to this salary administration. What I'm saying is, 50,000 of that, we put that back in to this, and that's part of the ELA salary of teaching and learning, the individual who retired.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, okay. So, that lowered that amount, so, almost like we're trying to make it a bit of a wash. It's not quite a wash, but it's 50,000 towards that position, if that's where you ultimately want to end up. So, whoops, Alita's gone. So, let's go to the, thanks, Joel, go to the next page.
Did I?
Or not?
Yeah, because you're going to say the next page has no changes. Keys that you're going to want to look at is, there's just a couple of these numbers. Everything else is going to say zeros.
So, basically, so far, in these two categories, we're looking at 286,000.
Right, that's exactly right.
Savings.
Yeah.
Reduction from-
No, 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 no.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's a reduction of the ask, not a savings.
No, that's right, it's a reduction of the ask from 120 to today.
Right. There. The facilities, we'd gone back to the facilities, had asked them to do a relook at facilities. Pat, for, if memory serves me, right, 100,000, right? I think is what we did there?
Yes.
And so, if you take a look at the total facilities, you will see that the facilities department was cut by, by the 100,000. This, whoops.
Sorry.
That's okay, go to the next one. To the top? Whoops, there. This is the leaching field, and Pat, I'm going to have you speak- And Pat, I'm going to have you speak to, because you met today with the Department of, or yesterday, with the Department of Environmental Protection.
Today, I met with the DEP, and I have some notes here that I need to bring these off. And we came to an agreement that they will be willing to allow us to do the design portion from our fiscal year '19 budget, and then the construction out of our fiscal year '20 budget. There's some paperwork that has to happen, and we have to have what they call a consent order. But Dave Formato will go over all of that next week. And, you know, we just have to formal, go through this paperwork, and everything should be all set. They just want to make sure that we are serious, and that we're, our intent is to meet these deadlines. And they were very cooperative, very nice people to work with. And they also went over some of the well relocation. And I'll let Dave talk about that next week, and...
What's the cost, then, for the engineering portion of it?
250,000.
No, not the engineering.
Or the engineer is 50,000, and that's in here, yeah.
So...
The 50,000 is still in the budget there.
Okay, so, again, one of the things I'm going to ask for is, because this is good, and we'll go through it, but we have the budget, we have the FY '18 budget, and then we have asks for FY '19. We need to know what are the asks that are still there, and the relative costs, so that we can see, this is what our budget is right now as of this year, the year that we're in. And as of next year, what we're being asked to do is fund additional programs, staffing, whatever it is. And we need to be able to see those individual additions to the ask.
Okay, there aren't a lot, just for clarification purposes, there aren't a lot of new asks. And I'm going to go, I'll go through staff again with you tonight. But, I mean, when you take a look at the line items for the principals and such, they're pretty much, I wouldn't say level-funded, but pretty close to level-funded. The change would be, for example, the literacy libraries that they're asking for. But you'll see that they've zeroed out some of their other lines to get to that line. If you take a look back at your original budget, you'll see that.
That's okay. I think it's important for us and for the communities to understand, what are we going to be proposing for next year? Not just what we're going to be funding, but what are we proposing? So, even if there's a swap-out in the budget somewhere, we still need to know what that is. And we need to know what that represents. So, even some of these positions, if you've found, you know, someone's retiring, so you're going to be using that money. You just mentioned that. So, you're going to be using that money. So, we need to know what that impact is on the budget. But it's not just 50,000, it's the full cost of that position. Perhaps you were able to offset it somewhere else in the budget, but we still need to know what that addition is. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Let me just continue on. This 40,000 is the other piece of that teaching and learning position. There's a 40,000 there, so that's what that is there. Just continue, scroll down then, Alia. This is a position here that has been cut through natural attrition and for a literacy position that the schools feel that they don't need anymore. And she's wrapping up at the end of this year. So, that was an additional 57,000 that just happened in the last couple of weeks. I don't want to take every, I'll go through all the different things, and I'll turn back to you. Just so that you know, this is a student coming back into district who had been out of district and is coming back in. So, that's why there wasn't had a 53,000 that we normally would have spent out of district.
I can talk...
You want to talk to the 50,000 and the 4,000?
I'll talk about computer hardware. We've looked at the asks for that and determined that there were some items listed in there that maybe we could push off or...
For another year or two.
For another year or so. One of them was the updating of the...
Graphic.
The graphic design lab at the high school. The equipment's still in good running condition, and it could be pushed out for one more year.
How old is the equipment?
I think next year will be its fifth year. Don't hold me to that, but I'm pretty sure. I'll have to ask you, Chee.
So, that's direct to the students, so I'd be, like, wanting to do that, you know? Just like I still want to, I'm dying to hear if we're adding that coding class, because I think that's a big deal.
There are coding classes being added, especially at the elementary middle school, just so you know.
At the high school?
I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't talking high school, I was talking the elementary.
And so, this is a good example of, and maybe I'm looking in the wrong place, where there was a request to push the Chromebook initiative, not just into the rising eighth grade, but also the sixth grade. So, where is that reflected in?
That's still in play.
That's still in play.
See, that's why, that is, that's a perfect example of why we need to be able to see what is it, what it is now, and what the additional ask is, because that doesn't tell me that. Okay, Kathy?
So, maybe you just answered it. So, we're in the computer hardware line. That reflects additional Chromebooks, or is that another line?
Yes, the additional Chromebooks, there are two pieces to that. There is, we either replace existing cards, or we go with the one-to-one initiative for the sixth grade. So, it's the same amount of Chromebooks to be purchased. It just, it's a determination of whether or not you want to do the one-to-one or just replace the Chromebooks in the cart. The cart is due to be replaced. So, that...
Do you want to speak to the next 4,000, why that 4,000 add?
Actually, before you do that, can you, so, for the computers, essentially, operationally, it'll be the same number of laptops as in the current year. And that's really conceptually how we're using them.
Correct.
One-to-one versus a common cart.
Right.
Computers, right. And essentially, there's no increase in the total population of laptops contemplated for that...
Really not.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, the laptops that they currently have on the carts would be replaced?
Right. They're due to be replaced.
They're due to be replaced.
The 4,000?
The 4,000, that was an increase of one of our software licenses that we felt that we needed to put that in, because we weren't notified of the increase until after we had done our budget workshop. So, we felt we needed to put that in.
Okay, go back to the...
Okay.
So, you know, this came up last year, and then it was kind of like we didn't do anything with it. And I think it was Neil that mentioned it. And I listened to what he had to say, and then, over the course of the year, it's become more, maybe because my ears have hooked up to it, but many districts that are, what's the word I want to look for? Not more affluent, because I don't think that we could call ourselves affluent, but those districts put out to the parents that the kids are going to be using Chromebooks, and would you like to purchase your own Chromebook? And in many districts, that's how they do it. So, the parents buy the Chromebook, it becomes their kid's Chrome, that's their property. I know that there is, you've got to sign an agreement for how you're using it with school, et cetera, et cetera. But I know parents in our district who buy their kids' Chromebooks. So, have we thought about looking at some of those districts that do a nice job with that?
Well, I know that we have looked into that. And I believe that there's a lot more to it than what I have the information. I don't have the information in front of me, but there are some pros and cons to it. And at that point, when we were looking at it, we decided that it was better to proceed in the way that we were proceeding with purchasing them ourselves.
I just feel like it's going to come back around, and we don't have an answer on it, so... And we're now, once again, we're at the 11th hour, but, you know, it's not like this is...
Is that something that you would really, I mean, I really, honestly, I don't care to support that notion, but the school, if the school committee wants to support that notion, then I think we need to, that's a whole other topic.
I don't think we can say whether we want to support it or not. I think we need to know how these other districts are doing it, and what is it that they're doing? And is it working? Because what I'm hearing, and what I'm reading is, it's kind of like accepted, and that's what they're doing. I mean, I can give you a couple of names later on of the districts that I've seen. But I'm not, I'm not trying to avoid the budget covering and expense. But if the parents would say, yeah, I'll buy my own kid for 300 bucks, I'll buy my own kid's Chromebook, give it to him for Christmas, some other event, whatever, why aren't we looking at that?
Again, I would say that we have looked into that, to be honest with you. So, I don't want you to think that we haven't had any...
But we don't have, we don't have an opinion. So, it may be, okay, it's something we know is out there. But I think, I don't know how much you're going to be able to do on it now at the 11th hour, but...
Is it fair to say on that topic that security and uniformity of the machines is one of the significant issues?
Well, no, you would tell them what the model, I mean, that's how those other districts do it.
Or, security on a machine not owned by the district, you might say.
And there's also, there's also the MCAS component, too. And that's exactly what, like, to Pat's point, it's pretty deep. But I'm not saying that it isn't working for other districts, and I guess you'd have to find that out. But you're absolutely right, those are some of the things that we have to think about.
But I could go out to give them information.
I mean, we would, for example, we would have to say that we wouldn't have any responsibility for the Chromebook not functioning appropriately with MCAS and not be...
But we don't even, like, so it's not even worth, like, going down all the, you know, the horror stories that could be, because we don't even know what...
Yeah, no, I understand. I was just making the point, you're absolutely right, that those are the things that we think about.
And the monitoring that we do have programs for now for the, as an early warning thing, that would have to be built into that, we have...
That's monitored over the lines, though, right? That's not monitored through the individual, everything goes into the server, doesn't it?
Yes, anything.
So, it's monitored at that point, not on the individual input.
During the school day. But when they're home with them, that's a different story.
But anyways, I mean, what I hear is the ask to take a look at. So, give me the names, and we'll reach out to those districts and take a look at it.
And I'm sure you know.
And moving on to athletics, you can see that there's a very small increase, and that was due to the contract. That was something that we had to put in the, oh, we had listed in athletics.
There.
Right, athletics.
So, that's why those $90 are there?
They're $90.
And have we factored in here the new user fees?
No, that wouldn't be in this particular part of the budget, no. Good work, by the way, to our school committee for accepting those user fees, as you did last time. Thank you for doing that.
The next change that we had was the English department at the high school. We have... Okay, go ahead. This is, the 90,000 is the, that's a retirement?
Well, no, it's a shift-in position.
Oh, that's the shift-in.
And a cut that we'll be able to make, because we won't backfill that position. So, that's what it is, it's 90,000 right there.
So, that's also a teacher reduction of 1.0 FTE?
Yes. One of the things I want to go back to, just, Kathy, I know that you've had, both you and Lauren have spoken to me at length about looking at the high school. And we did a pretty in-depth look last year. We went even deeper this year. We actually printed out three years of trends and took a look at those. And so, that's kind of, when we're looking at efficiencies, that was really, quite frankly, the first place we took a look.
And that references, just so, because I know one of the selectmen at Stowe is very interested in this, that references classes with really small, small, you know, single-digit numbers.
Right.
Okay, going over...
The next one, if you go down to high school, library, media, across the district in all of the schools, including the high school, we decided to look at what kind of expenditures were in that particular line, called instructional technology. And we determined that we needed to have some kind of uniformity across the district, so we cut that. And we decided that at the high school would be $5,000, so there's a $6,900 cut in that line.
That line, then, is in each of the schools. When we took a look back at the trend of how that line had been used across the district, there was really only one school that was maximizing that. And so, we took a look and said, you know, we can make a change in that line, so that's why we did what we did.
I mentioned that single school is not very happy about that.
I don't know, you can ask. Probably not. No, I would say that he probably is not.
On to the Luther Burbank Middle School. I think that's the next change that we have. The admin salary line has a reduction of 92.4.
Sure, I can explain that. So, that really is the assistant principal line, is what that is. And when we took a look and sat and talked about it, this will be something that we, like, originally, we had it in the ask, and I'm going to go back after that, the yellow pages shortly. This is one of those places where we found a reduction, so we could make it a wash. So, there wouldn't be additional lines needed for that. We will be able to pick that up through a reduction.
And on to the next instructional technology.
I have a question. Can you say, is it within the same school that this reduction, or is it elsewhere in the district?
No, it's elsewhere in the district.
Thank you.
So, if you're picking it up through a reduction, shouldn't it be listed as a salary that you have to include, and then the reduction would show up elsewhere?
No, that's not how we, we're just showing, what we're showing here tonight is how we brought this down to that 5.22%, and that's what all of these numbers will add up to. And we're showing where we made those reductions.
Okay, well, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but from what you just said, does it mean that there is money in the budget for an assistant principal at Burbank, but the reduction is coming someplace else?
The reduction is coming from somewhere else, from another building.
It just seems, and I don't mean this in an insulting way, it just seems misleading, because they will be taking the money out, but you're going to put it in, and that reduction will be someplace else.
That's why we made that look through...
Will we see that on the level budget?
We have to be really cautious, because if these positions are not, if you don't approve these positions, we're not going to put anything out there until we know whether these positions, because I think that we're sensing that these positions probably can be covered internally. We think we have talent within our school district, but it has to go through a process first. So, that's why we're tending to keep it a little bit more evasive right now.
Okay, moving on to the instructional technology at Luther Burbank. There was a reduction, again, of 5,150, keeping the same thing. Moving to the 2,500. Center school teacher salaries, the 11,200, that was the reduction of an ask? It was the, no, that was the reduction of the original budgeted...
The 11,200, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's...
That was the, that was the ask of the IT, the extra ITS person, that we took a look back after and decided that we wouldn't do that.
From Minuteman.
With, right, with discussions with Ross.
Right. And again, go ahead.
So, that's the tech ed that Minuteman covers? Are they going to cover that difference for us?
No, we're not going, no, we've had, I've had some very good discussion with Minuteman, and then I came back, and we had discussion at Stowe, and we're choosing not to go that route.
But Minuteman, usually they kick in if they think you're pulling back on one of their programs, so they'll pay for it, rather than lose the traction in the school.
It doesn't exactly work that way. That's what I thought, too. So, it may have used to work that way. It doesn't work that way now, and I'm not comfortable in us proceeding to add positions that way.
Yep, I get it.
And I, yeah, thank you.
So, am I given to understand that this is an opt-in program? The technical ed aspect of this at the middle school level?
That's, you're correct in terms of this should only be happening at the middle school level to begin with. So, that's a piece there, too.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but that's not the only piece. There are other pieces to it, but that is a piece, you're right.
Okay, and again, the reduction of the instructional technology, 6,500 at the center school.
That's not personnel, is it?
No, that's instructional, that's that same line.
That's the same line through all the schools. That's why you're seeing the involvement cut to 2,500, and the high school to 5,000.
And again, the Hale School. And at the Mary Rowenson School, there was a request for an additional...
Grade 1, that's the grade 1 teacher that they, we, we've had some really good discussion on that, and at this point in time, we have withdrawn that. And again, you'll see that snob to come through in a minute.
So, how about the sizes of that class before we get into Bolton?
No, we've had that, again, we've had that discussion. Bolton stays, but Mary Rowenson does not.
No, 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 but what I'm, I'm not... No, 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 but what I'm, I'm not saying one or the other, I'm saying, are you, are you close in Lancaster that you might have to pull another, you know, mid-year?
Again, Principal O'Shea has, has said that, that he's comfortable with this, so that, that was coming from him, that's not coming from us.
Okay, and again, the instructional...
There's that instructional direct technology line again.
And last but not least, we have the Florence Sawyer School, and they have only the cut to the instructional technology.
What does that constitute, these, the instructional technology cuts, what is that?
So that's just, that's, that's a great question, and we weren't sure either when we first started down this road, it was something that was put into place by previous administration, and we felt that it was, in fact, a bit of a duplication, and so that's why we felt comfortable in doing what we've done.
Okay.
So, the Florence Sawyer, they have requested grade one teacher enrollment based, same amount, so it just canceled everything, that's not represent, this is included in total teacher salaries?
Right, so let me go through now with the, just as a summation, so this would be like your new yellow sheet, it's just truncated, all the empty lines are gone, but you would be able to follow along perfectly with your sheet, because it's the exact same sheet. So, in essence, if you take a look, I'll start with the assistant superintendent line, and Joel, I don't know if you might want to speak, just on behalf of the principals here quickly, just for a fraction of a second, we've kept that in there with a hundred and thirty thousand requested, but know that really, my recommendation right now is eighty thousand, and that's coming from that other component that we were talking about earlier. Joel, just let you speak on behalf of the principals quickly about that position, because we had that, some of that discussion today.
Well, I just think, in terms of where we are with our Department of Teaching and Learning, and I think that it's come about the way that it is, very organically, because we had an assistant superintendent who focused more on, on the business management aspects, and we had a superintendent that focused more on the curriculum piece, and that, you know, that's not in place anymore, and so I think the, the, the directors of those curriculum areas in the Department of Teaching and Learning, it's become more of a flat structure, and so they, as a result, and I think it's come organically, as a result, there isn't that, that, you know, that, that vertical piece in terms of tying together professional development needs of the district and multi-year plans toward realizing those goals, and multi-year plans toward, you know, curriculum revision cycle, including a point that's been brought up here, it, how does technology integrates throughout that process, and, and when the principals met, it just, you know, we feel like that's, that's a missing piece, that is an investment that, you know, could come as a result of restructuring where we currently are, but provide that, you know, that vertical piece in terms of the leadership across the district for, for those goals of curriculum and instructional assessment.
I think there's a sense that it's been operating too, too siloed, and, and there needs to be some way of bringing all of that together, and, and doing a far better job to help provide direction for them, so, so that's it, thank you, I'll go down the list here, that sixty-four thousand with a special educator at Hale, that's actually gonna ultimately end up in spend, but it's there right now, because it's a, a new ask, and that's a new program that Jonah's put forward, there is a reduction of that point eight science teacher that was on there before, so that stays the same, over the page, there's that Minuteman position, and so we talked about that a little bit earlier, that eleven thousand two hundred, you see the superintendent recommendation is zero. The assistant principal at Luther Burbank, that's still recommended, but right now we see it as a wash right now with other, other positions in the district that we're be, we would be able to pick up that funding for, to move it, and, and we feel that there's talent in the district that can help to support that position. The ELL teacher is one of the new, one of the few that stays in there that we feel is badly needed for Hale, you see there's the enrollments in the classroom teacher, the grade one you'll see is not recommended right now, but that interventionist is, Principal O'Shea feels very, very strongly that he needs that position, so that position is still there. The classroom teacher, the grade one at Florence Sawyer, is still a position that's recommended, and so that has stayed there as well, so that is the, the latest iteration of the new staff increases. The other thing that we did is we took a look, and again, this is just for information, that's, that's all this is, what would it look like to make additional cuts, and how, how would that look across the district, so?
So, before we do that, because we're gonna have to talk about this yellow sheet that we're either tonight, or at the next school committee meeting when everyone is here, because I, you know, and I, I know that all of you in this room, and all of the others that aren't in this room, have had opinions on this, so I'm going to encourage the discussion about the ask, you can either do it now, or you can do it next week, but to not have a discussion and to not ask questions is not being responsible to the process, and we really need to be responsible. You don't have to be angry, you don't have to be upset, you don't have to question, you don't have to love it, but, you know, and this is just one component of the budget, which is why we need to see the rest of what's changing, and when we do, we can have that discussion. Are there any questions or thoughts on the new staff requests?
Well, I have some thoughts, not quite a question, we don't have in front of us the revised budget drivers page, which helps to show what's making increases happen, I imagine somewhere above eighty percent of our increase has to do with contracted increases with our teachers, and that's really what's making it...
Thank you for bringing that up, I think that gets lost.
That's making it hard for us to deal with, with any other staff changes, that, that's really pushing the entire budget.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
And I, I would appreciate being able to have, you know, have that page with these changes, so I can get a sense of that.
When can we get the updated, I'm gonna jump in, when can we get the updated budget, like, the updated total budget, that this is a result of, like, when are we gonna see that, because next week is our budget hearing, we're gonna need time to go over it.
Okay, so, we, we can, we can go back and have Michelle pull that together ASAP and ship it out to you, because this, actually this really is that piece, so it's just a case of taking those numbers and, and putting them in.
I think we need, we, we're now, personally, I need it, I personally need it, I don't know if you guys need it, but I need it, I am not comfortable moving forward without being able to peel through the pages, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark.
Sure, just sort of continuing on the budget drivers page, in the original version of the budget, the increase is about three million dollars, so substantially, all of that is about salary increases with a few hundred thousand dollars in new positions.
That's exactly right, yeah.
And our total...
Less than two hundred.
On that version of the budget, the total change year over year would be three point eight, so you can see that that's more than three-quarters of the change, hiding, hiding behind just dealing with our contracted increases with our teachers. So that's just, as far as I could have for comment, not really a question.
I, I would just reiterate too, like I said this at the beginning, and I say this again now, I know how much time we have spent on this budget, if we didn't have to worry about that, that level of increase, I would, I would feel very comfortable with the budget the way that it is, I know that, I know that you all have to weigh in, I'm just talking, just from my perspective, that's all.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. So, what we have...
Oh, so this, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were still having more questions, I'm sorry, okay.
Please? No. Oh, I'm sorry.
So what we did, if you, if you kind of take a look at where we're at right now, with the, basically what this all shows you, is basically we've peeled back one point one, two, three million, and from where you were January twentieth, and for us to, and that, that represents that five point two-two percent increase, for us to, we just pulled together, again, this is just FYI, that's all this is, if you take a look at, there's your five point two-two percent, I want you to look at the first column for assessment scenarios, that represents, and Dawn, don't, don't be too frantic here, that six point four-three percent, Lancaster seven point four-six, and Stowe's five point seven-four. If we cut an additional three hundred thousand, our executive summary page would be four point six-five percent, that would mean Bolton at five point seven-four, Lancaster six point seven-one, Stowe five point oh-seven, four hundred, and so on, so you can see how the additional efficiencies would be found.
Can I ask, before this gets distributed, that we, this, this could be misleading to people who are just looking at the budget and may not understand that a cut additional is not a cut, it is a reduction in the ask, because if I looked at this and I just went online and said, oh, what is it, oh, they're cutting three hundred thousand dollars of the budget, no, we're not, what you're suggesting is you're reducing your ask, so can we just make sure we're uniform with that, I imagine?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So that's just, again, we were just looking at different figures, and just thought we would put that out there for you to, to take a quick peek at, and I think, I think that's it for what we have to present tonight with regards to an update for the budget.
I hate to sound like Debbie Downer this whole night, but I have very quiet school committee members tonight, and I don't know why, but...
I have a question.
Ask it away.
I mean, I have a lot of questions, but this sort of gets at a little bit, I think what Lorraine was saying earlier, is that it'd be really helpful for me to understand, I mean, I don't, obviously, I don't, I don't want to know, like, you know, salaries or people, but in terms of like departments, if we're talking about, I'll pull, a big one here out of, relatively big, out of the facilities, the ask was ninety-seven, we've cut it down to, you know, the ask, cut the ask down to forty-seven, which is considerably less than, than what they had last year, and what does that mean for ground supplies, does that mean that now they don't buy rock salt?
Yeah, what's the impact of the reduction?
It's less than what they had last year.
Well, it's less than what was voted on last year, for, to, to be clear.
That's what it says.
It says ninety-three thousand five hundred was FY eighteen voted, requested, was, was ninety-seven thousand, and now they're requesting forty-seven.
So I think, Pat...
You know, and if it's like, oh, you know what, we have so much rock salt that we don't need to buy it, you know, for the next three years, and that's why, just to help me understand where those, some of those come from.
Right, but, I guess, you know, this particular discussion really was, say, between Rob and Pat, this particular, the one that you're asking, right, and so, keep in mind that we've gone to these folks, gone to our centers, like, those people leading the centers, and said, can you find this more additional, you know, and, so to that point, they would come back and say, listen, I can do without this year, or that, but maybe they can't do without it next year, and so you'll see an increase next year, because, and for the exact same type of scenario that you're talking about right now.
But unless it was fifty thousand dollars that was sitting in a savings account somewhere, and Elise is right, what did it represent, Pat, do you remember what that was, the fifty thousand was for? Because he's doing without something, what's he doing without?
Right.
Well, I think a lot of that had to do with some repairs that were made to the, some of the fields, there were a lot of repairs that we did last year, and I think that by looking, I mean, well...
So it was a one-time?
During this year, there are a lot of things in the budget this year that we have to do, that we have to do, there's an irrigation system, there's things like that that need to be done, we don't need to do that next year.
I'm really glad you brought that up, because I look up in the middle of the night thinking about this, and that was, don't, don't, don't say anything about that, yes, I did, what are some of those, and I remember several of them that we needed to do, and then it was in the budget, and then do we pull it back out the next year, or do we kind of let it ride, because we're so busy looking at other stuff, and so, it, I...
Well, I think, I think the nature of the whole department is that things happen, and sometimes they're really expensive, and when that, when that really expensive thing happens, and you don't have enough money in that line for the budget, then you're hoping that maybe you can put off this till the next year, and maybe, you know, spend, you know, that's basically what happens, you might have to put up to the next year, or look for efficiencies, or you didn't have to spend as much on salt, you know, for snow removal, or whatever, by the way, salt would come out of snow removal.
Sorry, that was a bad example of my ground supplies, but...
Anyway, that's basically the type of thing that's in there.
And I think the other thing that I really want to stress, and, and Mark, thanks for bringing up that whole eighty percent, because I think that people forget that so quickly, that eighty percent of your budget is contractual obligations, and so, no cost, none of these efficiencies were found by us in isolation, like, every one of these has gone through a thoughtful process with a leader of whatever that is, whether it's a school, whether it's a unit, or whatever, none of this has been done in isolation.
Yeah, and I mean, primarily it's, you know, and I used the ground supplies because it was an easy one, but, you know, I mean, if there's, and that, that totally makes sense to me, but if there is something, particularly as we have to continue to, to reduce the ask, you know, it's, if there are things that, that departments are, are going to have to do without, those are the kinds of things that I want to know, it doesn't mean that I'm gonna convince my town necessarily, but I think it's helpful information for parents and families to know, like, this is, this is where we are, and this is, if we want to get to point A, this is what has to go, something has to go, and, and maybe it's, you know, rock salt, or maybe it's coding classes, or maybe, you know, and be able to give that information to families and, and use it myself to make these decisions, you know, would be, I'm glad to hear, though, that we're not gonna lose rock salt, so...
This page is, thank you, this page is really, really super helpful, I think of everything, this is the one I need to, you know, because on the one hand, it's the, what, what are we getting for the spend this year, when we ultimately land where we're gonna land, and I understand the issue with contractual agreements, insurance agreements, et cetera, et cetera, but, so that little bit that's left that we have to play with, how am I gonna go back to my town and tell them, this is what we're doing for the kids, over and above what we were able to do last year? Now, I know that there's a lot that's, that's gone on, so, that's not my point, I mean, through the lens of the budget, I'm just saying, through the lens of the budget, so, because that's gonna dictate whether I feel like, hey, guys, I think we need to pull this down more, it's gotta be under five percent, because of the assessments to the town, before I do that, I would want to know what, what are, what are we getting, because I, I think, even if we said, nope, you gotta bring it down to three, six, nine, there would still be something that the kids would be getting, but I need to know what that, what that is, what are they getting?
Right, that's almost like a totally separate discussion, though, like, I mean, well, it is in some ways and it isn't in others, like, I mean, when we take a look at, like, literacy, I'll just go back to the literacy initiative that we've, you've been supporting for the last three years, right, when those teachers in this room, and you see what's going on, it's amazing, the work that they're doing, and that, well, you saw some examples last, last meeting, you know, and when we talk about technology, like, I'm gonna just give you an example tonight about Luther, what's, what's happening in Luther Burbank, they're actually coming here at your March seventh meeting, and they're gonna do a display for you, you know, to, to give you a sense, so, I mean, I think that there's, there are so many great things happening, but we're able to keep that kind of stuff going, because we've been, I think, incredibly thoughtful with what we're doing here, I mean, I, I don't feel right now that the efficiencies that we have found here are in any way harmful, no, I know that you weren't saying that, I, I know that, but I'm just saying, you know, we really looked to, to other places where we knew in the district we could go to, where there were, like, incredibly small classes, or what, so yes, you know what, maybe one of those, one of those positions would be funded for what I think Luther Burbank needs so desperately, which is an AP, and I think everybody around our principals table would tell you, she needs that, you know, it's up to us to try to figure out, okay, how do we fund that, you know, without it being, do I think that will benefit the students of Luther Burbank, oh my gosh, yes, I do, so I, I think that there's, there are things consistently throughout here, we haven't cut back one dollar on supplies, the only place we got back was on that IT line, and that was because we took a look at the last three years of trends on that line, I don't feel badly about that piece, I think the total was thirty thousand across the entire district, but, you know, those principals are still gonna have five or twenty-five hundred, you know, five thousand twenty-five hundred to still do some extras. or 2,500 to still do some extras, and that's still above the IT ask. So we feel very comfortable that those principals will have what they need. It's just that, will they have the luxury of extras? No, they won't. But I don't feel badly, or that they are being hampered. But there's not one resource line, including those literacy libraries that we haven't gone to yet. Now, I guess if, if we're told to really pare it down, then I guess we probably will, but right now, as it sits tonight, and I'm not advocating for tonight's budget, because I just don't think our towns can still do it, quite frankly. And again, I would want that out there, that I've communicated with each of our town managers, so they know where we're sitting, you know? No one to surprise by what's come forward tonight. They all know where I want to get to, I just don't know if I can get there, you know? But right now, the supplies are all the same, and what the principals have asked for have remained in there. So where we took a look for efficiencies have been places where we knew we could make efficiencies.
So, yeah.
Just, I think when you get to the point where you're looking for additional efficiencies, they have to be understandable, from my point of view, of what doesn't get touched. You always preserve your core.
Math.
Yes.
And English, language, and literacy is a core. Social studies has been the stepchild of this district forever. It's about time that it was looked at. So, so I think that there are things that don't get touched.
Yeah.
But then you really have to, and I'm not saying you, you, I mean, in the process, there has to be additional scrutiny to other things, are there areas of redundancy anywhere? And it's not easy. It's not fun. I mean, I've been an efficiency several times in my career, and that was not fun, but it's, so I think moving forward, and I agree, I know that when we met with Lancaster, they wanted a 2 percent increase, and it's not going to happen, but it's still, 5.22, and I appreciate that if this was done, is, is still high.
Right.
It's still high, and, but, you know, so I wouldn't be in favor of touching anything that's curriculum-based, because that's, that's the essence of what we do.
Yeah. So I would for them, I would say 98 percent of what you're saying is true, but I will tell you that one of these positions right now is a, is a position at the high school where Principal D. Domenical feels that he can make, again, based on class numbers coming up, so we're comfortable with that. So there's one position here where there was a transfer, not even a transfer, there was an application to another building from a teacher at the high school, and so that teacher got the position, and we looked and we said, we don't need to backfill that position. It was one of those subject areas that you're talking about, but it was one that we felt we could let go.
The, the high school's a different cat.
Okay.
If, from my point of, just because you get into electives, and it's like anything else, and I looked at the electives, there were some that are really, really, really low, and so, you know, so it's, it's more complex, I think, at the high school, and I just feel that if there were more scrutiny, and I know you've, you've done, exercise your due diligence, but then make them a point, and I hate to take anything away from anybody, but you go to some of the electives and say, you know what, maybe not anymore, or maybe not now, or, or whatever.
And, and I'm going to totally agree with you 100, 100 percent on that, more than 100 percent on that, but then I also have to look and say, and I've said this to Lorraine now, you know, as soon as you get this revamped in this book, we all know, especially the educators in the room, know that they are going to look, and they will all turn inward, because they're going to know that it's this position or that position, and we won't have told them that that position is being cut, because we don't have to yet, because contractually we don't have to, but I'm just saying.
This is wrong.
That's part of the issue.
Well, then, if that's the case, then you got to give us the new asks, right?
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not.
No, 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 I know, but I hear what you're saying.
I, I, you're going to, it's going to set us up for some major issues.
Well, the way you articulate it now is much more powerful, but we just need to know what we're buying, like, we need to know what we're signing up for, and, and I don't.
Okay, we keep going back at different ways trying to find.
No, 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 I've been insisted for weeks now.
No, I understand that. I think we, I'm taking the blame, saying, clearly, we must not be nailing it. We thought tonight this would nail it, and clearly it didn't.
I think it's helpful, I think it's helpful, it's certainly very helpful to see where the ask has reduced.
Yeah.
But we need that other piece, which is, so what are we, what are, what's the list? Like, when they all came in and they all gave us their asks, right? What is not, what is, what is, what stays in the ask for each area?
Right.
Not what dropped off the ask, because we don't care, because that doesn't impact the budget.
Right, but if you, if you were to take this line, for example, I don't know, pick a line, let's go, let's pick a school, let's go to.
Pick a school.
Yeah, pick the, let's pick one of the elementary schools, or Burbank Middle School, for example.
Page 11.
On, on page 11, yeah. So if, for example, you were to look at, let's say, music supplies, like, if you go down to music supplies, 2,300, 2,200, 2,200, and that's the other thing, is you're going to see, a lot of the principal's asks were level funded, which I almost feel guilty of, I'm not going to lie, I almost feel guilty about that, because very few things are level funded anymore, and if you take a look from here to here, that number is the same. So when you see the zero, that means that that, none of that has been touched, that is all still the same as the ask that's in that binder. It's exactly the same. This is just a truncated form, that's all this is, for your viewing pleasure.
Yeah. The difference between fiscal year '18 budget and tonight's fiscal year '19 ask is 3.843 million. I would like to know, that 3.843 million, how much is the contractual obligation that we really don't have anywhere to cut? Okay? What is that? How much is that? And what is the, and what, what impact does that have on all these percentages? Because that way, at least we have a talking point, say, if it's, if it's 80 percent of 5 percent, that means we're asking for a 1 percent budget increase on the asks in reality, and the rest we have no control over.
Well, that's, you're absolutely right, Steve, that's exactly how you need to look at.
So one of the other things to look at, Steve, I know, were you here last year?
No.
Or weren't here? To go back into the packet for the town meetings and look at the, the slides that were created for the town meetings, because that's how those slides were put together, to help everybody understand that here's X percentage that we can't do anything about with, with salaries, here's X percentage with insurance, which, you know, I still believe, and hopefully we're going to see some of that, there's an opportunity there, and then we're left with this, to your point, so that's how it's, that's how we presented the past three years in a row, so that's where we will go, but, yeah, it's hard, it's, it's hard right now to see where we're at.
So are you looking for, like, this is our obligations, then there's the health insurance, and then everything, then there's our needs, which is basically our facilities, we have to maintain our buildings, because how many wants are there in there? That's basically keeping things running, right? We're not buying any new equipment, so there's only.
I think all those should be listed, broken out, because if Mark, if Mark has to go before a town meeting, and, and talk about this, I mean, you're talking, you're talking to a bunch of people in Stowe who will understand this, they may not like it, but you have to make it understandable and palatable.
And then, and then when we get to the next iteration of this, I could see maybe doing that, but right now, we know this isn't going to be the iteration, but I think, but, but, but the percentages, you're not looking for dollar numbers, you're looking for percentages or both.
Well, one can be converted into the other fairly easily, so.
Okay. Are you, just so I'm clear, Steve, are you looking at the very first one, the very first iteration?
No, I'm looking, let's say, at tonight's.
At tonight's?
At tonight's iteration versus the fiscal year '18 budget, okay? The difference is 3.843 million, okay? Now, that 3.843 million may be made up of 2.5 million.
Of contractual obligations.
Of contractual obligations, and, you know, 1.3 million, 1.4 million of additions, you know, that we need to do. And as, as Pat said, part of that is, you got to maintain your buildings, you got to pay for.
Electricity.
This, you got to pay for electricity, you got to pay for propane, you got to pay for sewer systems, you got to pay for this, that, and everything else, so.
Okay, so that's.
Has to be explainable, and theoretically, for the 28th, which is the budget presentation, we should have those numbers that we can talk about.
But those numbers are going to change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're, to your point, we can, we can pull that together pretty quickly, quite frankly, so.
I do have some general comments. It's been a long tradition for this district to use the change in salaries from retiring or departing individuals, and to use the slack thereof to support changes in the budget in the future for exigencies that happen in the coming fiscal year. In general, that amount is somewhere between 250,000 to 500,000, depending on how many people depart or retire, for whatever reasons. And I think it might be time for us to take a look at being clear about the expected retirements or departures, and looking at that in a monetary sense, and seeing if there's something to be had there, recognizing that makes it a lot tougher in the subsequent fiscal year to make, have any surplus, basically taking out whatever surplus you get, which was about $600,000 this year, but, and perhaps as a consequence, we end up having a line called contingency, and you're a little more honest about how your budget is compiled. So that's one thought, I have others, but I'll keep talking about this one.
Well, can I just respond to that for a second?
Yeah.
So I, I think, first of all, at 250,000 to 300,000, I think is way too high, because don't forget, too, that contractually, there's that, that early retirement incentive, incentive that comes out of that money.
Right.
So to say it's 250,000 to 300,000, I think would be exagger, not exaggerating in a bad way, I think it's just like overcompositing whatever that amount would be, because that, those monies come right off the top of that, and, and that's on a separate line item in here, it's expected that, you know, it's paid out at the end of this year, like, this will be the 2019 budget, it'll be paid out of the 2019 budget, right? So we always have to kind of keep that in the back mind, yeah, because that's, that's there.
But we know what that, we know what that number is.
Well, we don't know what's sitting here right now.
Not the 2019, we know what 2019.
Right, but we. This is next year.
No, 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 understood, but we, I mean, you know what, you know what your ages of your, your staff are.
But we can't tell when they're going to depart.
We kind of know what the range is of what you could see, but go ahead.
All you have is a statistical number, we see anywhere from 5 to 20 disappear every year for various, you know, benign reasons.
Anyway, that's, so I'm not, I'm not really arguing with you, I'm just saying, keep in mind that we have to keep that piece in mind, because that's often a big number, like, that was about 100,000 for us last year, and so when we say those numbers, we have to keep that, that piece in there.
And we also have the obligations of, you know, when, say, we need another aid because a student moves in, we have to have.
That money has got to be there for us.
We can't be taking from other places when we need that money.
You can't cut in the middle of the year because you've got somebody that's moved in or whatever.
And maternity leaves, and things like paternity leave, whatever, we need money to cover that.
So my point is, it's a hidden resource that's not visible and not discussed in the budget process, and maybe it's time to start talking about it. So that's, that's one thought. So a second thought is that we, through the general fund, are supporting various operations that are revolving fund personnel, like our health insurance and our retirement, for, to the extent it is, maybe it's modest, maybe it's not, are supported through the general fund, and I certainly advocate, we as a school committee, looking at seeing that these revolving fund activities are genuinely and fully self-supporting on their benefit overheads, so that the, for the non-teachers, the Worcester Retirement Funds, for OPEV, and for health insurance, and making the fee structure for all of these, for these couple, food services one and extended days another, fully self-supporting on that, and that may be a few hundred thousand dollars if we adjust our rate schedule to handle that burden. Right now, that's a taxpayer burden for those individuals. So I think that's a discussion we need to have, and that's a place that we could, you know, reduce the burden on the taxpayer. Then the third one is, you know, further exploration about what is our staffing level? It's not set in stone what our staffing level is, it's not an obligation that we can't change, we actually have to look at that, it's part of, I mean, being responsible about what our operations are, and so I disagree with the idea that we can't change that, we have to actually talk about it.
Actually, to be honest with you, I think we are, I think through, through these efficiencies, we are changing that, so I just want to put that out there, and it really does stem back from some of our discussions last year, that was the first place we went, as, but, having said that, I understand what you're saying, but when it comes to elementary classes, for example.
It's very, very difficult to change anything.
Yeah, that, that I'm really not in favor of changing at all right now, so the only place that I can see us making changes really is at that high school level right now. What I, what I know about our middle schools, I'm not even prepared to do that.
But the consequence of that conversation is that everybody, every school committee member and all the selectmen have a defensible understanding of why things are the way they are, and we've been working our way collectively as a school committee towards having that sound understanding, so that we can well defend the operations of the school committee, and I think that conversation, you know, helps that, helps that defense process, yeah.
Okay, any other, thank you for this, I mean, we really need to, tonight was probably the first time we've actually started to dig into this a little bit, so thank you for your efforts, and y'all need to be ready to do that again next week, when the full committees together.
I'm, I'm assuming that you're wanting us to continue to find efficiencies.
Well, I think you've indicated yourself that we know this isn't where we're going to land, so.
I, I really don't think it is, I don't think we can, I don't think our committees can, can handle it.
So we're going to trust you, that you.
Continue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would be interested in seeing the full budget in the current form, and the easy way to do that is to send out the spreadsheet, so that we can actually look at the details. We haven't seen the spreadsheet since someone created this year.
So that is what Superintendent Clancy is concerned about, given some of the things that she may be working on, thinking about trying to shift pieces to, you know, it's like, I got a half here and a half here, if I put that whole together, and the visibility into that may be misunderstood, and it might start a whole spiral.
It will, because it will be a public document, and to your point, somebody could pick it up, and, and, no offense to the newspaper, but a newspaper could pick it up and say, oh, this is what I think it is, or that's what I think, and without that contextual information, it just, it makes me so nervous.
I want the whole thing, too, but it may be helpful, can you, well, you know what?
Like, for example, we don't have, you know, the comprehensive budget driver's page, and that's very helpful.
Well, that we need.
That we can, that we can pull together.
But also, the other pages are very helpful, so I'm just saying, it's, it's a unity, it's not, it's not one page or another page, the whole budget is what we need to look at.
So, you know what, we'll, I'll talk, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll talk about that. Okay, digital learning update.
Thank you, thanks, Pat. I don't think I need you for the digital learning, and I apologize, I think we were supposed to be finished at 7:15.
No, that wasn't going to happen with the topic on the agenda, wasn't going to happen.
So there's, and I'm not going to take too terribly long on this, but I want to kind of go through a couple of different points, and I'm going to get, Alita, if you can pull up, thank you, what I'm going to distribute, again, this is just for reading pleasure, that's all this is, I'm not even going to go through it tonight, it's just, just reading pleasure, and Cindy and Martina had pulled this together when we were talking about digital learning, but it's just way too lengthy to go through, but I'll just highlight a couple of things for you, as they looked at laying it out, they said, okay, so if we do this, what does this look like in our district? And so that's where you see some of the things, like, underneath each little section where it starts digital learning, you'll see what this looks like, and they give examples. you'll see what this looks like, and they give examples, again, I'm not gonna go through it, I think it's just reading pleasure, that's all it is, to give you a flavor. So Chairman Ramasco had asked me if I could take a look and, and kind of give some thoughts of my own on, on this, some of the areas that I think we need to take a, a look at, some of the areas that I think are areas for challenge for us, and so, I'm just gonna go through this, you don't, I don't think you have this, but I just wanna go through it, and again, I did the same thing with the principals that I did with the others. I took a look at what my thoughts were, I put them down on a sheet, and then I shipped them out to the principals and said, do I have this right, have I captured this well? And this, this was one of those sheets, I wasn't sure if I'd captured it well or not, and they all came back and said, no, that's exactly where we see it. So when I speak about this, although I'm speaking about this from my assessment, the truth is, the principals feel the same way. So right now, the foundational work at the K to 5 level, we feel is a strength that we wanna continue. This goes back to the fact that a couple of years ago, you reinstated those I T S people back in, and so we feel right now, particularly at the K to 5 level, it's working really, really well. Those folks are embedded in, they're doing a really good job, they're doing some coding classes, they're doing all kinds of different things in there, and, and we'll take a look at Luther Burbank, even though that's a middle school, but that's just because they're coming to present to you, so I thought it might be a, a nice through line for you. So I don't think that we're wanting to make a lot of changes at the K to 5 level right now, I think we're in agreement that what we're doing is working well for us. I think that we collectively agree that throughout the district, I think there's the, there's a sense that we've got true pockets of excellence happening out there across the district, and what we want to do is support and expand some of those pockets of excellence, and, and learn from each, and learn from each other, I think that there's more that we can do in this area, but this is a strength that we see at the, and, and want to continue to expand upon. We have ongoing professional development to support technology integration district-wide, and again, this kind of goes in line with, there are some pockets of excellence in there that we would want to continue and expand upon, but when you, when we look at areas of challenge, we also see it as an area of challenge, so it really depends on where you're at in the district, which creates part of the issue for us, because it's a level of inconsistency. The fourth is that we work really, really hard, as I know that you all know, we worked very, very hard last year on ensuring that our teachers and our students were prepared for the next phase of the MCAS 2.0 implementation. This year, we're doing the exact same thing, and so we want to continue with that work to make sure that everyone feels confident and that they are fully prepared for a full implementation of the MCAS 2.0. We want to continue to encourage and support technological literacy within the classrooms for all staff and students, and I'm gonna talk about the fact that that's an area of strength, but it's also an area of challenge for us. So we want to expand on what we know is working well with regards to both staff and students for literacy, it's happening really, really well in some schools, and I think when Luther Burbank comes, you're gonna see that that's a school that is working particularly well in, and other schools, we feel that there, we have some concerns. Areas of challenge that we wanna spend time on this year as a district, I think, and this kind of ties in with some of the, the comments that some of the school committee members have said to me, we have plans in place for technology, we have plans in place for replacement, we have plans in place that tie in with our district improvement plan, but what we don't have is a plan specific to expectations that are clearly articulated regarding digital learning. So we, we are brainstorming right now and talking through a myriad of ways that we can get to that. So that discussion is ongoing, but we acknowledge that we have to find a better way of creating positive, consistent through lines across the district in this area. The next is clear expectations for staff and students beyond the elementary grades, again, I set up above, we feel very comfortable with that, our concern right now, particularly with regards to consistency, lies in that middle school and high school, and so those are the areas that we feel we need to go back and review and put a focus on. We need unified, consistent approaches, what we feel right now is that there's some hit and miss approaches that are good, well-intentioned, but they're not necessarily sustainable, they don't have the through line that we are looking for as a district to, to kind of amp the game in this area, so we feel that we need to look at a more unified, consistent approaches, articulating digital learning across our district, and again, more importantly, at the middle and high school level. The final is a clear mapping of professional development that ties in with those expectations. It's one thing to have the expectations, it's another thing to say, now let us help you to get there. That is not saying that professional development hasn't occurred, it has, and I think it's been ongoing, but I think it needs to tie in more with our expectations. My apologies, is it drying here, is it just me?
No, keep going, I'm loving what you're saying.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, so I think that, yeah.
What, your candy?
Actually, a cough drop.
Cough drop, that's what I was saying, thanks. When we talk about our...
I can do CPR.
I think I'm good.
I wanna sit down.
When we talk about our teaching and learning unit for next year, what's, one of the things that we, we are putting a focus on, and it's too soon for me to come to you and tell you what this looks like, and because it's, it's one of those things, it's too soon, Mark, to even say, this is what it's gonna look like in a budget lens, but how we're anticipating it is that it will be a wash, kind of like we were talking earlier with washes in budget, it's not gonna be an additional money ask, but it is going to be a different way of looking at some of our staff, and how we utilize some of those, those staff, oh, thank you, nothing like you all taking good care of me, thank you. So, um, those discussions are ongoing right now with teaching and learning involved, as well as our principals involved, so those are, that's in a nutshell, I wanted to try to find something succinct, and I appreciated the work that was done on this, and I'm not poo-pooing this at all, I think it's a great framework for contextual information, these are my thoughts, so it's kind of a little bit different, but this is where I see us headed.
Kind of relieved, because for the first time, I feel like, okay, I don't know how you guys feel, but like, yes, yes, please, keep going, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, you know, when you look at districts that have been really successful at implementing technology and integrating it, and having it become, you know, part of their DNA in the district.
Yeah.
It, it starts with the vision, the, the learning vision for the district, you know, whether they're gonna focus on personalized learning or universal design for learning, and then it becomes, everything we do ties back to that vision, the way we use technology, it, it's because, and does it serve that vision, well then we're not gonna do that, because this is, we all share this, this is where we're heading, and I think, you know, that really ties into sort of number three there, you know, this unified and consistent approach, that we all say, this is where we're going educationally, and this is why this technology purchase serves that vision, you know, A, B, and C, or this is why this new course that we're gonna do on 3D printing and maker spaces ties into, I'm gonna make up courses that I wanna see.
Right.
You know, ties into our vision for learning, and it, and then it makes it, you know, not easier to make the budget argument, but a little bit easier to say, well, yeah, this is why we're spending money on this, because it serves our vision.
And not that I want, not that I wanna bring this up, but it's, but just for the sake of showing you how creative our thinking has been, we've even questioned the whole library piece, is this time for us, over the next year or two, to really re-look at libraries, and do we build in maker spaces? I mean, we're having those kinds of discuss, again, I'm not, it's way too early for me to bring anything forward, but those discussions are ongoing right now. I think, too, when Joel was talking about, because that is one of the, the, I don't wanna say complaints, because nobody would ever complain about our teaching and learning unit, they're such hard workers, they really, really are, but we do feel that it's just been, it's just been so flat, I think that they try to work together with each other, but instead, what they really need is that, that holistic vision to say, and social studies is a perfect example, actually, now, with the new social studies curriculum coming out next year, and we wanna ramp up to it, because we're already seeing the basic templates coming through right now, so we can do the same kind of thing that we did with science, catch it early, start to plan for it, budgetary as well, so we know that there's gonna be digital learning components to that. We, we can start doing that planning now, with the right players in place, with the right thinking, the right culture, I think that's also a piece of this, and, you know, Kathy has said this pretty consistently, you know, the, the right expectations for our staff, so I think it, I think this all ties in together, so, that's just our headspace.
To, you know, be able to integrate things better too, when they have a clear educational purpose for it, when they can understand...
It's more exciting, too.
Right, and it's more exciting for them, because this is like, oh, this is something that, this is my goal for my students, and this is how this tool is gonna help me get that, to that goal, not, this is just a new thing that I have to learn, that, oh my God, I have to learn another new thing this year.
I think back, like, it, when I've been in classrooms, for example, that use SMART boards appropriately, or ENOBords appropriately, and with depth, you can't get a more exciting classroom.
Yeah.
Honestly, they're just amazing classrooms to watch, so there's so much that can be done out there, and if you talk to Martina, Kenyon, who helps to oversee our science and math, she gets so excited when she talks about the new science standards and all of some of the, the work that's being done in our district on the Chromebooks, and how they're pulling units together and such, my concern so far is that we haven't provided, I don't think, adequate guidance in this area, I don't think we've provided adequate expectations that are clear, and I don't think we've provided the right environment, so I think these are all areas that we need to go back and have a look at. So I think that that's, oh, and I did say that I had, um...
That's a bit refreshing, thank you. Where's Neil and Lynn when you need them?
So these are just a couple of, each school sent in some of, sorry, some of their key things that, that they look at in, for technologies within their schools, and so I just pulled Luther Burbank's side because they're coming in, and again, I'm not gonna go into any details, it's just for your reading pleasure, that's all this is, it doesn't represent anything other than to give you a flavor of the type of work that's being done within their classrooms. And I think that's it, unless you've got other questions or comments, concerns.
Okay, appreciate the update, we'll see where, where we land when the full groups together next week. That's it for old business, we don't have any subcommittee reports, unless anyone's got something they wanna share or correspondence that's notable, we have the consent agenda of the meeting minutes for the 14th, 2018, so we'll assume that those are approved. Next agenda, okay, so, next week's gonna be a long meeting, just prepare, Melanson Heath, so y'all, you folks remember John Sullivan from Melanson Heath, our forensic auditor, he's gonna come back and share with us his insights, and I know, Pat, you've been working with him even before the audit was...
Well, actually, one of the other partners is...
Oh, no, really?
Yeah.
That's too bad.
We like John.
But that'll be good, so we'll get him, so you know what, the good news is, it will take even less time, because we won't be gathering with John. Pat's gonna provide an update on the employee insurance, I had asked to have the administration take a look at our insurance costs and going out and seeing what other opportunities there are there, in order to impact that, I'm gonna ask you about the team next week too, because I wanna know the makeup of that, and then we'll have the gentleman here on the Leach field, and the public here.
Budget hearing.
And the budget hearing, yeah.
Budget hearing starts at the, the meeting, we're gonna do the budget hearing before we go into the meeting.
I'm just giving you all the headlines, so, that's all I have, and with that, if anybody would, anyone have anything else? And if not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Captain can't get the birds off fast enough, and all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you, thank you so much.
Kathy, I have a quick question for you.
Sure.